Regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors for August 23, 2022. All please stand for the pleasure.
Welcome to the republic of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Captain Chief Philip Plasky.
Director of Engineering Services Jim Sullivan.
Dave Criss, Director of Finance.
Jeff Winterbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Sean Kellamy, Township Solicitor, and I see my colleague James Gallagher out here, but we also work together.
Kevin McDevitt, Supervisor.
Ashley DePiero, Supervisor, accompanied by my daughter Sage.
Before we get into the agenda tonight, it seems like this happened more often. We had another person who spent a lot of time and dedication to the township who passed away today, and I'd like a moment of silence for Joe Rockline. Served the township on the plant commission for years, served in the fire company for many years, and he's passing, should be noted, so let's have a moment of silence for now.
I'd like to announce that prior to this meeting, we met in executive session and talked about personnel litigation issues. Anyone on the board have a question about the minutes from the last meeting, July 26? Okay, here we go, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 26. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor DePiero, who in favor? Aye. Motion counts. Okay. Now, to get to the reason you guys are all here, not that you wouldn't attend the meeting anyway, but we appreciate you being here, and I'm sure our new chief will too. Just to, a bit of background, back in March, we announced that our former chief Brandon Pasquale retired, and since then, we have discussed in the open, Chief, Deputy Chief Plasky has served as the interim chief during that period. We advertised for candidates for the chief position for a couple of weeks. We had some good candidates apply, we did interviews, and tonight, we're here, and it's my honor and privilege to make a motion to appoint our new police chief, Philip Plasky.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor McDevitt, who in favor?
Aye.
Motion counts. Now, we will have Mr. Don Ben, if you would come up here, chief, and not, to swear the chief in.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Philip Plasky.
I, Philip Plasky.
Do solemnly swear or from?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties?
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of Chief of Police at East Norton Township?
Chief of Police at East Norton Township.
Montgomery County?
Montgomery County.
With fidelity?
With fidelity.
Congratulations. Congratulations to you, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Go ahead. Chief Ben, you have your thing, his own lighting, cool.
Yeah, yeah, do the picture of that.
Can you tell me which one?
Rachel, the other side.
All right, before we adjourn, sorry. Thank you, Ben. Well, it's truly an honor and privilege to give me opportunity to serve the residents, the businesses, the visitors to East Norton Township, as in Chief of Police. And I, out of my heart, sincerely thank the Board of Supervisors for choosing me to be Deputy Chief of Police. I'd like to also thank Township Manager Bob Hart, the nominee for this position. I have a special thanks for retired Chief Brandon Pasquale. Two years ago, Chief Pasquale chose me to be his deputy chief. Dedicated public servant, was a great mentor to me, and under his patient tutelage, I became the police executive. Last but not least, probably the most important, is I want to thank the police officers of the East Norton Township Police Department. Anyone in this department are out there protecting and serving the township, and without this support, I would never have been chosen as chief. So in closing, I'd like to say that I promise to tire us to serve the East Norton Township community. I promise to treat everyone and demonstrate fairness and integrity of respect and an unwavering commitment to the safety of our residents, of the citizens in our township. Thank you.
Mr. Chris says it can be heard online, everybody?
It's a good question.
No, Mr. Jay. Everybody in the room, yes? What up, man? Did you phone me, Don?
No.
No, that's Don.
I'm sorry, no, Don.
He put his hand up first.
You want to go first? You were in the same direction.
Good evening. My name is Don Ben, I reside at 2502 Vincent Way in here in East Norton. Besides being official swearing inner, I am also the Township Constable. Initially being the Township Constable, I am also the chairperson of East Norton Human Relations Commission. Two weeks from now, or whenever September 10 is, we will be having an international food showcase as part of our space at Community Day. I'm here today with my co-chair, Deborah Kelly York, and we're here to urge you, please enter if you have a family dish, a family favorite, something that your folks brought over from the old country, something that you've beaten from anywhere you've been, submit it. We're going to have food, we're going to have a cookbook, we're going to make our own cookbook, which will be available to all residents of the township. There will be flyers available for anybody who wants one. Hopefully, everybody will want one. If you can't cook, by the way, I'm presenting Don's cheese sandwich, secret ingredients are cheese. But please, anything you have is appreciated. For more information, you can find us on Facebook, Human Relations Commission. The township will, hopefully, soon, start plugging the heck out of this. And again, we have flyers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Don. I will take advantage of that, too. Okay, great. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is Paul Hefner. I don't even know if this is the right place to request something like this, so you'll set me straight, right? But I'm here to request the installation of two new stop signs at the corner of Kimberly Drive and Jennifer Drive in the Kimberly Knoll section of the township. Again, you'll point me in the right direction if this is the right, but the timing of it was that we had an incident there this morning with a distracted speeding motorist and a child, and thankfully, everybody's okay, but I want to make sure that, on behalf of the children, that it doesn't happen again. There's a T there, there's a one-way stop, but I think we would like to see two new stop signs put in, so that it's a stop at each end, so that we can avoid a tragic outcome in the future. So, if this is the right place to request that?
This is the right place.
Great, if somewhere else, that's great, too, but.
Your resident, you have to count Kimberly.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Should I say? I will make sure our board and the chief and our engineer in public works as well, because they know the ones that get the signs out there. Well, whatever's needed, we'll be out there and get it out there.
They're going to want it one time, why it's not there anymore, I don't know. It just is, because the timing of it was today, so we're meeting tonight, and Joe is a big supporter of old friends, so.
Absolutely. We need to go back to East Norton Old League days together. Thank you, Paul. Okay, anybody else comments at this point? No, okay, we're going to move on to business. Authorization to re-advertise a parking wreck building. I would like to call our Director of Engineering Services, Mr. Jim Sullivan. Can you do this?
Thank you, Chairman DeVannes. As it says, it's an authorization to re-advertise. We scheduled a bid opening for last Thursday, and we received no bids, so we would like the authorization to re-advertise the parking wreck building, and hopefully, if you get a bid, or if you don't, you can then hire a contractor directly.
Okay, any comments, questions from the board? Okay, hearing that, I'll make a motion to approve the re-advertising of the parking wreck building. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Supervisor DePiero, who in favor?
Aye.
Motion counts.
And new business, I'd like to call Eric Meyer, he's the Fire Service Director of Fire Services, to present the rescue pumper.
Thanks, Superintendent DePiero. For those who know the audience, do not know me, I'm Eric Myers, who's the Director of Fire Services for East Norton Township. With me today from Norton Fire Engine Company is Kyle Savadis, he's the Vice Chair of the Commission. We've put together a committee, next slide, Dave. We've put together a committee combined of East Norton Township employees, myself, an Assistant Manager Jeff Winterbottom, and four people from Norton Fire Engine Company. Kyle Savadis is the Vice Chair, Kyle is a longtime member of Norton Fire Engine Company, a career firefighter, also by trade with the Upper Providence Township Fire Department, and he is a past captain and also a past Chief Engineer in the department, has an extensive background in apparatus. He is currently the current Chief Engineer of Norton Fire Engine Company, he comes with 40-plus years of experience. Kevin McCourt also comes with 40-plus years of experience as a Chief Engineer and Engineer and Driver/Operator. Jim O'Neil also comes with 30-plus years of experience. So, we've put together a team of individuals to design this piece of apparatus, to come from all different backgrounds, but all have extensive background in fire and emergency services. So, to kind of understand where we had to go with the apparatus and looking at an overview, we came up with a plan on how to replace these large ticket items over the next few years. And with that came some hard decisions, okay? We had to look at price, we had to look at feasibility, we had to look at need for the township. Currently, the township owns two engines in which they started to purchase. The first one that they, or two fire trucks, it was the first one that they purchased was Tower 61, which is pictured there at bottom, and Engine 61, which is pictured there right next to it. Everything else down the side is owned privately by Norton Fire Engine Company. I'm going to turn it over to Kyle Savadis to kind of give a little bit of a background of what each one of these apparatuses are, and what they do, what their job is. Kyle.
Good evening. So, currently, the newest major piece of apparatus in fleet is Engine 61, which is a 2014 V1 pumper. That is the primary response unit at Station 61A on Sweet Road, which is staffed with volunteer members of Norton Fire Engine Company. In addition, the second newest piece of major apparatus is Tower 61, which is a 100-foot aerial tower, which currently resides at Station 61V on Highway 100. That currently is the more used aerial apparatus of our two in the township. Vehicles currently owned by Norton Fire Engine Company are Air 61, this is a 1994 air light support unit. This is the support needed for fire operations. It's not a major piece of suppression apparatus that provides us the ability to refill or breathe air cylinders on scene and provide additional light and power generation capabilities. Quint 61 down at Stations on Sweet Road, it is a 1999 V1 75-foot quint. So, the term quint is a combination of aerial pumper, it has the aerial ladder, as well as pump hoses and water on it, which is the same with our R Tower truck, which has capabilities of fire suppression as well. Quint 61 and Squad 61, it's twin, were purchased at the same time, so Squad 61 is currently a 1999 apparatus as well, which is what we are going to discuss as far as replacement tonight. Squad 61 is a pumper, as well as it has rescue equipment, it has the majority of the rescue equipment for vehicle rescue, road rescue, water rescue, that the department currently owns. Squad 61 is also the vehicle that's used day-to-day by the township fire service staff to go out and not only respond to emergency incidents, but do inspection and enforcement capabilities as well, in addition to smaller vehicles which are used when needed. Utility 61 is a 2004 Ford F-50, which is a general-purpose vehicle for hauling extra equipment and manpower, towing or filming trailer, and then we have two small command vehicles for the officers of the fire company to use. Next slide, please. So, our current replacement schedule based on NFPA is pumppers are recommended to be replaced every 15 years, so that is what the squad and engine are classified under. Ladders or aerial apparatus, which are called a tower, 20 years, the command vehicles are 10 years, and the support vehicles are 25 years. So, as you can see over here, our current fleet status, Engine 61, that major apparatus is due to be replaced in 2029. Squad 61 was due to be replaced in 2014, so that is significantly over its recommended original replacement schedule, as well as Quint 61, which is its twin, which was purchased in 1999. Tower 61 is due in 2029 as well. Air 61 was due also in 2015, because it's a 1990 vehicle. Next slide, please.
So, with that plan that we're currently operating under, you think there was a little bit of a discliner, there was things that were due all at the same time, duplication of apparatus. So, we went through and we took a look at the need, the feasibility of the township, looked at the township growth, also reviewed NFPA and replacement plans, and decided that we were going to come up with a new replacement apparatus, apparatus replacement plan. So, that, we're in Squad 61 as Kyle's, our primary piece of apparatus up for replacement, finally, a few years late, now 2022, 2023's time, so Tower 61 will remain at 2029, and Engine 61, because of its second-out status, it ended up being able, we were able to stretch that to 2034, so that we can have some breakup in between the purchases of these major apparatus with cross-completion and things like that. Even just the pumppers are running at between $900 to $1 million at this point. So, we had to look at it on a feasibility side and say, we need to make sure that we're doing the right things. So, we have decided, with, you know, a whole category worth of people, we have decided that we are going to reduce the fleet by one aerial, we are going to come down. For Quint 61, aged out of service, and when I say aged out of service, it does not mean that we are going to sell it next week. What it means is that once that truck has hit a point where it will no longer service our needs, it will be sold off or decommissioned. We are just, we have no plan at this time to replace that piece of apparatus. What will that do? That will reduce the replacement plan by about $1.5 million right out of the gate. ISO, the insurance rating that we have for the township for fire protection, it'll assist us in lowering that rate for the, for that rating, for the, to the homeowners and their fire insurance rates. So, like I said, that'll be aired at HM. Air 61 had some compressor work refurbished, brand-new. The whole inside of the truck is brand-new, the whole outside of the truck is older. We don't really need that to all be brand-new, that truck is still very strong. We, that truck will also be aged out, which will probably last farther than the quint at this point, it'll just not be replaced. And at the time that it is not replaced, there is air resources available from West Martin, Wet Marsh, and Lomond River Township, so they're surrounding us. If we do end up reducing that down, then we have mutual aid partners to be able to call upon. Kyle's going to talk about the replacement that we're proposing.
Okay, so the proposal for replacing the Squad 61 would be a 2024 Pierce and Forzer rescue pumper. Committee met with three vendors, and each vendor provided us with a specification, the bid packet, as well as drawings, and after extensive research, looking at sample apparatus from other surrounding departments, the committee made a decision to recommend the Board of Supervisors for the purchase of the Pierce and Forzer rescue pumper. This apparatus is designed to be a first-out, yield hazards unit, will have the capability for all our fire suppression, hose, water, pump, ground ladders, as well as it will continue to carry on in a much more organized fashion, all of our equipment for vehicle rescue, the Julye, Johnson Life, road rescue equipment, water rescue equipment for times of flooding, and will pretty much be able to handle any call in East Norton Township as the first piece of apparatus on scene. The goal is to be used as the duty truck for its first response, incident stabilization. So, what that means is this will be the primary piece that will continue to be used by the township staff, as well as volunteers, when the township staff is not working for the state program and whatnot. So, this will be the designated apparatus that whatever crew is on duty will respond and just can handle any type of incident. That's the reason why currently the township staff is using Squad 61, even though it's not the newest piece of apparatus and has more miles on it, is because without the apparatus, we really don't have that capability of providing all services at once, because the apparatus is dispatched when other callers add on an inspection, and it suddenly comes in where they need vehicle rescue equipment, well, it's not feasible. If they're on the side of town, drive back to another station, grab another piece of apparatus to come back, they'll just delay their response and not provide the best service we can for residents and visitors in the township. The apparatus will carry 650 gallons of water, which is slightly more than the current squad now by 500, so a little bit more tank water, as well will carry some phoning, which we do not currently have on the apparatus. We'll have 2,700 feet of suppression and supply lines, as well as increased steam lighting. So, again, as we discussed, we have an air light unit, but a lot of lighting technology is old halogen lighting, and that used to be, you know, premier back in the day, but now we're able to provide all the capability of that truck and some more on our front line piece of apparatus, so it won't make the need to call in additional resources for seam lighting. Next slide, please. So, here's a overall design of the apparatus, just for visual representation, as well as color scheme and lettering. It'll pretty much be the same footprint as far as wheelbase and length as the current squad, but will have increased storage due to some design changes, and will have additional room and capabilities, not only for hose and water, but as well as equipment. Next slide, please.
So, that brings us to our final slide, which is the proposed cost of this apparatus is $905,000. That is not including the equipment, the equipment is coming off of the old truck and going into the new truck. This is, this is $905,000 for the shelving, the truck, chassis, the motor, the truck itself, the pump. There's two different options that Pierce Manufacturing, based out of Wisconsin, is who the committee has chosen as the preferred vendor. There's two options. One is a prepayment, which offers the municipality a $35,640 discount, and that is due 30 days prior to the contract signing, where there is just the split payment of, you buy the chassis upfront, and then you have 90 days before the apparatus is complete, then we are due the rest of that balance. Just to kind of give everybody an idea, this is about a next week, next month, or even next year end date. This is, we have to get in line, these trucks are built custom for each municipality that orders one, and currently, build times are approximately 24 months, because of supply and demand issues. So, we're hoping that that gets better after we sign the contract, but we are not anticipating that in this, in 2020 months, before we sign the contract. So, with that, Chairman DeVannes, I turn it back to you, and I appreciate your time and allowing us to present it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, and thank you, Eric. It's a great presentation, you guys know your stuff.
Thank you.
It's good to have people like yourselves supporting the township. It's a, it's a big chunk of money, we know that, it's a multi-purpose pumper, I believe, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, we have to, with Mr. Chris, our finance guru, and Mr. Hart, we'll have to work through the numbers, and, you know, hopefully, we can, we can make this happen for you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we will, Dave, I will be meeting with Dave next week to start really digging into the numbers a little bit. I'll bring my, the February later. As you know, both finance directors.
I have a heart attack.
Are not experts. And, but, this is an important, obviously important piece of equipment that really saves lives and has a meaning to kind of, and the technology has grown, that we can show much more on one vehicle, on one apparatus, that in years past, it would have taken two or three purchases. So, stay tuned, we'll be, we'll be back in front of you in September, in the meeting with more detailed information and more financial information. Okay, any comments for the board members, questions? Okay, and thank you again for the presentation, guys.
Thank you, Chairman.
And we can move on to the next slide.
Okay, Resolution Number 2864 waiver of land development, Jador Company, 546 Truver Road. I'd like to call on our esteemed engineer, Kevin Sullivan.
Thank you, Supervisor Sullivan. I'll introduce this project, this is, resolution is approval of a waiver of land development for the Jador Company located at 546 North Truver Road. I'm seeing Mr. Sefeli, the owner of the company, and his professional assistant, Brad Gral, is here to give you a brief presentation of the project and to agree to all elements in the resolution, which Mr. Sefeli already asked, because he sent me a signed copy, so that's a good start. Mr. Gral?
Yes.
Why don't you explain what this project is?
We have a plan that can be shown, or?
Yeah.
You do?
You're the one with the plan, so.
I don't have a plan.
They all have copies in their packages, so you can just go off of that.
What do you think, I think? I'm Brad Gral, I'm the licensed professional land surveyor, the owner of OTF, I see, we're a surveying, land planning and design services firm from Landis International. We're celebrating our work here. Representing Mr. Sefeli tonight, the Jador Company. The site is an existing site, and operated by Jador, and site is fully paved, and Mr. Sefeli's looking to put up three whole buildings within that paved area, we developed the plans, submitted them to Jim, been going through reviews, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I just have a comment, I did read through that whole packet today, and I know there was comments from the Montgomery County Land Division and from our engineers, but I know that Mr. Sullivan and his two villagers has made sure that he would reply with those, all those comments that were made, even the existences were made, in, I guess, support of waiving the land development.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir, it's a yes, that is correct.
All right, well, Mr. Chairman, if you got questions, Mr. Sullivan, just elaborate a little bit on, how will this change the property or make it more, its uses a little more practical?
Well, it's my understanding that they had a lot of issues with their doors and things, door outside.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm John Sefeli, the owner of Jador. Okay. We've had a lot of, we've grown tremendously, we have about 6,000 square foot warehouses, and we're in town, we're just storing everything outside, which is not conducive, so we're So we're basically going to use these buildings. One, old barn's going to be for residential, one's going to be for commercial, and one's going to be for my parts. That way I can clean the whole yard up and get everything out of your store outside inside these buildings. It's primarily for store, indoor store.
Thank you, because that's exactly what I was trying to say. Because I knew that's what you were doing.
More than you did, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, and I just will say, and I'm as positive as possible, but the property does have a lot of items on it, and anything that's going to clean it up and make it look a little bit more presentable is definitely a good thing.
Yes.
Any comments from the board members? All right, well, then I will make a motion to approve, to waive the way of the land development portion for Resolution Number 2864, for the Jay Door Company at 46 North Truver, I'm sorry, 546 North Truver. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor McDevitt, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, well, we have to go back to Mr. Sullivan for the next question. Finalize the old march road sidewalk improvement project. Your show, Senator.
Thank you. Chairman McDevitt, I don't know if Mr. Hart wants to take over, but I'll try to start here. A couple of months ago,
Now, unless I have to.
The board supervisor authorized a notice of attachment to this project. Project engineer has issued a responsible contractor determination, which shows that the contractor, NGS Concrete, is a responsible contractor, and we therefore ask him, the board supervisor, to finalize this award. This is the same contractor that is doing the handicamp ramp project throughout the areas above Northwell Road. NGS Concrete has a contract for one hundred forty-three thousand, eighty dollars. We have a hundred thousand dollar grant, a fifteen thousand dollar match requirement, you know, Mr. Chris said to come up with a twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is nowhere near nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars like the part, guys. I would assume that you'd be able to authorize us to finalize this award.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any comments or questions from the board members? Mr. Chris is still breathing, so it's good to see. I will make a motion then to finalize the old march roadside improvement project, to, I guess, to say that the contractor is compliant and approved as a reputable contractor, so I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor DePira, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our next one is the monthly expenditures, so I want Mr. Chris to explain that.
Thank you, DePira. Thank you, Township Engineer Sullivan. Presented to you tonight are the attached expenditures for the month, more specifically the expenditures from the date of our last board meeting to the date immediately prior to this board meeting. Those total expenditures are eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and six cents. Our accounts payable expenditures, payments for utilities, supplies, services, et cetera, have totaled four hundred and twenty-two thousand, six dollars and seventy-one cents. And our payroll expenditures, salaries, wages, taxes, were at four hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. We're asking for the board's approval of these expenditures, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. Or Jim might answer them, I'm not sure. Very positive.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chris, that's very, very helpful. I might see no questions here, so I've made a motion to approve the total expenditure of eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and six cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor McDevitt, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Other business? We have no other business, Mr. Hart. Okay, managers update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to apologize for my staff, I had, I had a large jar of, I remember, jelly beans that apparently is empty, because they're, the loopy behavior, clean other house will be running on something. I'm just kidding. No, I want to, first by, really, I don't want to welcome Warren to chief, because he's been here for two years and done a great job, but I just want to, let's say, the residents of East Martin Township are truly in good hands, but he has a vast amount of experience in every way that you all know, and things that may never happen in East Martin Township, but we're going to be prepared for the worst and hope and pray for the best. And that puts us in a unique setting, a unique civic throughout Montgomery County, throughout this town block. Chief Velasquez brings such a degree of expertise in so many substantial and serious areas of law enforcement and emergency management. We are truly better for having him here. So like I said, with our fire and our total emergency services group, when our residents go to sleep each night, sleep well, because we have talented, we have talented police, fire, and any of us personnel in here looking out for your safety every day and every night. So that is a big, really a big to say, to be able to say from my end. Community Day is coming up on September 10th. I know it's here, it's during our fair, we have thousands of people there at this point. We have a couple bands, we have our typical, really extravagant, we have our beer garden and the wine garden, Kiki Mocker's there with their games. We have this year, we have a special higher balloon rides, which is massive and valuable, suspect it's going to be a great, great day, so we really look, look out for a great day there, and we hope everybody comes out and enjoys the day. We are keeping the wristbands, doing any ride, everything, all day long, to five dollars. I can tell you, if you go anywhere else, it's five to seven times that amount, but this board has told me many times, we're here for the residents, and it's important that we make things affordable, and we're here to, we're here to give options and a better lifestyle for our residents, and bring some joy to a twenty-year period that hasn't exactly been most joyful. So stay tuned for that, I think it's going to be a really great day, you'll see everybody, I know, our chief will be there, shaking hands, and I know, maybe we get Supervisor McDevitt's the same a little bit, but it should be a good, a good day and a good event. So that's all I have, we look forward to, something's coming, that fall's going to be exciting, we got a lot coming up, so stay tuned.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, that's great, I don't know that scene, but I will be there. We have a band too, Wildflower, will be performing.
And a second band, stay tuned.
And a second band starts at three PM on Saturday, September 10th. Citizens to be heard, anybody comments? Any online? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to know, there's going to be an update on the dog park issue.
I almost mentioned a little bit there, and to be quite honest with you, with, between last meeting and this meeting, with some things we had going on here, vacations, September will be similar information on it, but there isn't many, I haven't really had a chance to do anything in the last month on, but I promise you it will be, I mean, we've reached out to some other places, if there are people on vacation, to get back to us, so we'll have a little more information in September, and hopefully a little more meat on the bone, so.
Yeah, I just don't want to get left behind, just having talked to a few people and some things that I read, everybody said it's been brought up before and nothing ever happens, so I just want to.
I've been here six and a half years, prior to, two weeks ago, I think it was brought up once, four and a half years ago, I've never brought it again, so that's, that's true, but, yeah, we're going to bring it out here. I'm not, I'm not telling you there's, I'm going to, there's going to be a dog park, I'm going to give that information then between the residents and the board, we have to decide what works, but I'm trying to pull all the information together to see what the best and what's involved in it. As you know, if you were here the last meeting, some places have almost no restrictions, and other places have a textbook of, it's ridiculous, so finding the right next there makes sense.
I think you need the restrictions, absolutely.
No, no, I get it, I get it, but I mean, I've had some experience where they said, some of these places I called, they said there's so many restrictions, people say, you know, basically, god, hell with this. So I kind of want, we kind of kind of have a base of restrictions and rules and understandings, but again, not so many that, you know, we're taking DNA from everybody. I know that sounds like a joke, but that's, some of them have been almost that, that far, so of course we want to keep people safe, we don't want, we don't want, you know, not when there were dogs biting each other, we want people fighting each other.
I think we can replicate what we've had, that's seemed to work for them, there doesn't seem to be any issues over there.
Right, right, not yet, not, there hasn't been much in the last, you know, prior to it was, that's why they, that's why they changed.
My name is Paul Sandy, I'm a two thirty-six, I'm sorry, that is, I'm not a good public speaker, so.
Bringing that back to our attention, because we have been working on a lot of things, even though it's the door day to work, we have been busy in the township.
To be fair, they asked me about this in the session, and I said, you got, until next week, there's a lot going, there's truly a lot going on, so.
So you and the person talking about that, though?
Sure, sure, yeah.
I tried to catch you at the meeting area last time, we didn't say, and I have a couple of questions outside of the room.
Okay, if you need me, I mean, literally, you can get me an email any day.
I tried to look you on the line on the website, I didn't.
Okay, rhart@eastmarttp.com, so Robert Hart, R Hart, or eastmarttp.com. Listen, call here, I'll, I'll get out there, that's for Bob Hart, I'll, I'll.
All right, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, upcoming meetings, Tuesday, September 20th, the Human Relations Commission meeting, Wednesday, the 21st is Planning Commission meeting, one day, September 26th is the Historical Advisory Commission meeting, and the next board meeting of the supervisors is Tuesdays, September 27th. And this one day is coming, everybody, we hope to see you all at Community Day, it's going to be fabulous, Sunday, Saturday, September 10th, 57th with fireworks at Dustinville, hope everybody can attend. And on that note, I will make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Supervisor Pira, on favor?
Aye.
Motion.